All right. Good evening and welcome to our October 25th Board meeting. If we could all stand and say the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Good evening. We will start with our special acknowledgements at the Rye Recognition of Excellence Awards. Dr. Byrne.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome. We are so pleased to begin tonight's meeting by honoring a group of extraordinary students. The Rye Recognition of Excellence Awards recognize students who have achieved great things in the arena of academics, arts, and athletics. Tonight, we honor three Rye High School seniors who have been named semifinalists in the 2023 National Merit Scholarship Program and 10 who have been named commended students. The National Merit Scholarship Corporation recognizes outstanding students based on their PSAT scores. Approximately 1.5 million students in over 21,000 high schools automatically enter this competition when they take the PSAT in their junior year. You don't even know that you're being entered into this competition. Of that 1.5 million, 16,000 students throughout the nation are named semifinalists. These students place in the top 1% of high school seniors who took the PSAT. We are very proud of the three Rye High School students who have earned this distinction. Please come forward as I call your name. Julia Cabrera. Congratulations, Julia. Cassidy Pagan. And Elizabeth Waters. Of the 1.5 million students who took the PSAT, 34,000 students are named National Merit Commended Students. These students place in the top 3% to 4% of high school seniors who took the 2021 PSAT. We are very proud of the 10 Rye High School students who have earned this distinction. Please come forward as I call your name. Cassandra Brooke. Congratulations, Cassandra. Sophia Kai. Aiden Hufford. Joyce Kang. And I don't believe Joyce is with us tonight. Abigail Kaplan. Jolene Koch, and Jolene could not be with us this evening. Zoe Leanne. Congratulations. You're a regular here. Ami Matsushita. Congratulations. Another regular. Philip Seidel. And Harry Swanson. Our warmest congratulations to the students. Their success is reflective of a great deal of hard work and dedication, not only by the students themselves, but by their parents, their teachers, and the school district community at large. Congratulations also to high school principal Suzanne Short, who will be the first to tell you that this year's senior class is an exceptionally talented one. And now, if, oh, we're all in place, so we're going to do some photos. And so Sarah will get some photos that we can get to you. And then she'll take a few, and then you can come on up, and we'll keep them all up there for a few minutes so you can take photos. Suzanne, come on up.
All right. Well, thank you. That's always one of the highlights of the year, certainly, to be able to recognize our exceptional students. So now we have our report of the superintendent.
We do. And I actually have another recognition before I begin my full report. And while it's officially over, last week was School Board Recognition Week. And we did say a little thank you at the previous meeting. But we have beautiful certificates for each of our trustees. So I'd like to, oh, all right. Sarah Dermon is going to help me.
Thank you, Sarah. Thanks.
And perfect for framing in your home office. But thank you very much. You know, people don't realize the time and commitment that it takes to be a trustee on the Board of Education. And the amount of thought and care that you put into these roles is extraordinary. And I brag about this all the time. And I've shared with some of our newer colleagues over the last few years. I explain to them that it's a little different here in Rye because we have the best Board of Education you could imagine. And I think Tricia and Brian and Erin, they didn't believe me when I said it. And, you know, we are very fortunate because there aren't, I've been to a lot of school board meetings over the years, and I've watched a lot on the computer. And people don't talk about the stuff that we talk about, like we're going to tonight. And that's a credit to what you believe in, a credit to your work in creating and adopting the Rye Commitment, and in supporting us to do the really good work that gets us really good results. So thank you all very much for your service. So good evening, and thank you for joining us for our October 25th Board of Education meeting. I've said it before, but recognizing student excellence is one of my favorite things that we do here at board meetings. It's also nice to recognize our Board of Education. And it's always such a pleasure to honor the students, and being able to do it in person once more is wonderful. We held our first round of parent-teacher conferences at Rye Middle School last week. And this year, we tried something new in that Joe DiGiovanni asked the Rye Presbyterian Church to allow our parents to park over there for conferences. And I understand this went a long way towards relieving both congestion and parent anxiety about finding parking. So we thank the church for allowing us to try this. Teachers at the elementary schools are getting ready for their first round of conferences on November 17. On Thursday, October 20, John Hawkins, the district's coordinator of safety, security, and emergency preparedness, and Dr. Caitlin Saison, our director of technology and CIO, held two parent-university sessions on safety and security. It turned out to be particularly timely in that we held the district's first-ever non-planned, non-drill lockout event two days earlier on October 18. I would say we probably had about 45 parents between the two sessions. We did a morning session, thank you to the Rye Free Reading Room, and we did an evening session here at the NPR. That lockout came about as a result of a vague text message sent to one of our students that referenced a potential mass shooting event at a school. It did not mention Rye. It did not mention any of our schools. But the Rye Police Department were able to determine fairly quickly that the text was, and I know I've shared this with the board and put it in some communication to the community, but it was a concerned grandmother trying to warn her grandchildren about attending classes on a college campus in another state where there had been real threats made. The well-intentioned grandmother entered the phone number incorrectly, reaching one of our students instead. And the student immediately reported the text to their parent who contacted us. And although it is by no means a pleasant experience, all of the administrators who participated in the lockout were pleasantly surprised at how seamlessly and quickly the lockout was conducted. And those drills do, in fact, help. We had a strong turnout for our safety and security events, and I think that helped put a lot of parents' minds at ease about our security preparedness and procedures. Switching gears, parents in grades 1 to 8 received reports from the first round of the NWEA assessments on October 21. These assessments are given three times a year to students in grades 1 to 8, and they are proving to be incredibly helpful in informing classroom instruction in literacy and math and in meeting the individual needs of our students where they are now. Yesterday, Dr. Murray hosted two well-attended parent-university sessions. Some board members were there to help parents interpret the reports. Thank you, Dr. Murray. And we're going to talk a little bit, I think, about the NWEA and some data tonight. And we are rapidly approaching the October 31 deadline for applications for community members to serve on two districts committees, facilities, and technology. All the information and applications are posted on the homepage of the district website in the district news section, or please reach out to our Public Information Officer, Sarah Dermon. As always, we deeply appreciate the time and energy our community is so willing to give to these committees and to every facet of our schools. And finally, please mark your calendars. On Monday, November 7, we are hosting Dr. Denise Pope, the founder of Challenge Success at Stanford University. And she will be here in the Performing Arts Center at 7:30 p.m. And Dr. Pope, who spoke to our parent body last spring, but the subject this time is the college admissions process, a hot topic for many of our parents. I think it will be a very informative program for parents of all grade levels of children because it, for many of us, it is an eye-opening experience because what we may be experienced as college applicants ourselves, it's a totally different world out there now. So I encourage you to join us that evening. And that concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you. And in full disclosure, I totally fanned Girl the last time Dr. Pope was here. And so her talks are quite informative and are really great perspective. And so I certainly will be there, and my oldest is only in eighth grade, so we're thankfully a few years away from college admission. But it is certainly a message and a conversation worth all of our students.
We are taking Dr. Pope to dinner in a restaurant this time, Jane, so.
Lessons learned.
I got in trouble for that last time, although Stacy did an incredible job.
Stacy does a great job, but still. Just to go back to your first statement about thanking the board, I think it's fair for me to say that all of us here on the board are thrilled and able to be able to do such a great job because of the work of the administration and the leadership. And you don't get to talk about the kinds of things we'll be talking about tonight or that we get an opportunity to talk about at most of our board meetings without having a highly functional leadership and administrative team. So we thank you all, and we're very fortunate to have all of our administrative team here tonight. So thank you all. I did have a question that I just wanted to follow up. The safety and security sessions, those parent-universities, were those taped? They were not? Okay. I wasn't sure if they were. It's a shame because it was definitely a great opportunity. And I know that Mr. Hawkins said that he was going to post information on the website.
Yes, and we're sending the parent flyers to all parents, and we will run them again. John Hawkins was quite a hit in his performances, and I think there's definitely demand for more parent-universities with John.
Yes. Great. We'll look forward to those. Okay, we'll move on now to presentation and discussion number one, assessment data. Dr. Murray, before you start, just as a matter of process, would you prefer that we just kind of insert questions along the way? Because there's a lot of information, and I don't know if you'd rather us hold it all in.
I think that's the best way.
Okay, great.
Please feel free to ask questions.
Fire away. Not, I mean, ask away. Yes. Ponder. Question. I'll work on a different word.
Okay. Good evening. Thank you. So tonight, I'm going to be giving an overview of assessment data from last school year, the 21-22 school year. And I am joined here by our fantastic principals, Jim, Suzanne, Jo, Angelina, Annie. We'll be also talking a bit about what we do with all the assessment data we have and how we use that for instructional purposes in the classroom. So the level of high-quality instruction that we aim for in the Rye Commitment truly can't happen without really high-quality assessment. So assessment is a big part of what we do every day because it points us in the right direction for what we do with students. So when we think about the Rye Commitment, the assessment piece is just a really important part. So I just wanted us to keep that in mind. Not only are we thinking about the type of instruction, but it's how are we thinking about, what are the best ways we can think about and learn about what our students need next? In order to do really careful assessment for students, it's also, it's very important that you take multiple measures into consideration. We have a lot of different types of local assessments that we do, and there are also New York State assessments. So we do, as far as New York State assessments, we give the New York State ELA in math for grades 3 through 8 one time a year. In addition to that, we also have the Regents, which is another New York State assessment. The NWEA is a local assessment we give. That's our universal screener. That's for grades K through 8 in reading and math, and that's three times per year. Local assessments, we do the K-5 reading running records, the K-2 phonological awareness and phonics blending assessment. And we have many different types of K-12 unit assessments that depend on the specific course. But most of our assessments, just so you understand that most of them are local, that's really where most of our assessment lives because that's what we can use right away for instruction. And I also wanted to just do a really quick recap on the curriculum and instruction shifts that have happened over the last five or six years. Because as you put different shifts in place, you want to analyze the data to see what kind of impact is being made. And there have been a lot of shifts. So back in 2017-18, we had the implementation of Teachers College Reading and Writing Units of Study. That came into our schools in 1819. We started our first PBL cohort and then added a cohort every, the next three years. Math and Focus, we brought into kindergarten through 5th grade in 1920. And then in 2021, we implemented Teachers College Phonics in K-2. And that's also the same year we started our Haskins Lab partnership for students in what we call Tiers 2 and 3. Those are for students who need extra support outside of the classroom, really focusing on phonics and students who are at risk for language-based learning disabilities. Last school year, in 21-22, we focused on the universal screener and implemented that. And it really became a really, an important tool for our MTSS process, which I've spoken about before, helping us identify the needs for students, both in terms of challenging them and also supporting struggling learners. And then this school year, we're continuing our partnership with Haskins Lab, really for Tier 1 instruction, so classroom instruction, focusing on the science of reading to, as an important part of our early literacy program.
Tricia, I have a quick question on the PBL. Is that mostly at the high school level or all? What grade level have the cohorts been? Because some of them precede me. And then is there a way to have some assessment around, and what would we be assessing? Because I know there's a lot of anecdotal positive feedback from parents and students and teachers, but just wondering how we think about that success.
So the PBL participants have been at all levels of the system, including specialists. So we've had librarians, we've had elementary teachers, and we've had secondary teachers as well. Probably the best way to study the impact is to do some ratings of student engagement and looking at student focus, student engagement, and student productivity, and give kids an opportunity to do a lot of reflection. Individual teachers have done that at the ends of units. And we've actually had students and teachers here before the board sharing their work. And we, pre-COVID, did a couple of gallery walks where we were actually seeing the work samples from the end of the units. But we haven't implemented a specific assessment tool, per se. We've used some good assessment practices to see the impact of the work. But it's a great question for us to be thinking about, especially, I mean, when you think about what we were doing today, the work around critical thinking and the Rye Commitment work with the learning tool. So much of what we were doing today would be so applicable to looking at a PBL classroom and seeing in a sort of PBL unit what that looks like with that rating scale. So it's certainly something for us to think about moving forward.
I have a follow-up question about the PBL. Is there, is the goal, is there a plan to have a fifth cohort? And is the goal, once you are in a cohort, you've kind of gone through it? Or do you see teachers joining different cohorts? So I guess what's like the long-term strategy with PBL and implementation of it?
So not in the model we've been using, however. The foundation for PBL in terms of active learning and embedding critical thinking in what we do, we're kind of putting a different spin on it, but you're getting at the same, you're getting at the heart of it. So this year, we're going to be working with teachers to create critical thinking challenges, which is essentially a really high-quality, high-level PBL task, in the largest extent of it. So we, it's, we're getting at it in everything we do versus just one cohort at a time.
Yeah. And I mean, the thinking is, how do you bring it to scale? That is a question we've talked about before. And how do you accelerate that kind of thinking in classrooms across the district? And moving to a whole district focus on critical thinking and that curriculum development piece was the direction we shifted to. I think we're certainly seeing some really good work so far.
And I think that the PBL cohorts helped us build a capacity to be able to take it to scale, right? You have enough of your critical mass that have had that type of learning, and then they're able to expand it across the district.
That sounds like it's now woven into the curriculum. And we won't see it in a chart like this.
Right. We're now doing a PBL.
Because now it's encompassed throughout the.
It was a separate standalone thing, and now it's embedded in what we're doing, on a broader scale, actually.
Great. Thank you.
So the first set of data that we'll look at is the New York State ELA assessment for grades 3 through 8. This is a 2019 to 2022 comparison. It shows the percent of students at levels 3 and 4. So that's, level 3 is proficient, level 4 is above. And the reason we're looking at a 2019 comparison to last spring is because there was not a test in 2020 due to the pandemic. And then in 21, it was a very different test. It was all multiple choice, and very few students took it. So the last test that really matches what the students had in '22 would be 2019. So those are the outcomes of that. You can see that in grades 5, 6, 7, and 8, we had some increases. In grades 3 and 4, that's, we have some dips. And that, you know, is something that we're thinking about. There are a couple of different possibilities. One is, you know, those are our youngest, when those, during the pandemic, those kids were in first and second grade. So that could be an impact. We don't have the data to know how those 4th graders would have performed in 3rd grade, so it's hard to know if that, if they're going down in any way according to that measure. But what's important for us to know right now is that we have to work hard to get them, you know, up to when they take that assessment at the end of this, our current 5th graders and 4th graders, the end of this year, and really think about, that's where, you know, the differentiation just really comes into play there. But that's something we, we also want to look at other data points to see if it matches as well.
Do we have a feeling from the teachers who are dealing with these kids that that would, that that age would have been harder to move to remote through the pandemic? And that the older kids would? I mean, just looking at the graph, it seems like that would be a natural hypothesis to come to.
Right. Yeah. I mean, I, from what I've seen, the principals can chime in here, but, you know, from what I saw, it was hardest on the youngest students. And order to, remote instruction for young kids was not ideal.
Because so much of what you do, particularly in reading, is that small group instruction with individual kids based on assessments. And it was really hard to do that in that remote environment.
I mean, it seems to fit that kind of thinking. And in that, I'm kind of surprised the drop wasn't bigger?
I think that was partially.
I think that's kind of.
I would say that I think our design, if you recall, we, our elementary program focused on literacy and mathematics. So even when we were in that hybrid model and kids were in half-day, that was the intense focus of the classroom teachers. And my suspicion is that helped to prevent that.
Makes sense. Great.
And here is a slide that shows the ELA longitudinal data. It goes back to 2014. It's color-coded by cohorts. You can kind of follow the cohorts down diagonally. Overall, you know, we look, we're performing at a much different level as a district back than, back, you know, from 2014, 15, 16. Really, once we get to like 18, 19, we seem to be trending in a much better direction. And the cohorts are, you know, showing improvement or staying stable. All right. And then now we're going to be looking at math. This is New York State math assessment, grades 3 through 8, 2019 to '22, the percent of students on levels 3 and 4. So you see increases here in all grade levels except for 6, even though 6 is a small decrease there. I have talked before about the math committee that we had at the middle school last year and the outcome of that work. When we looked at the data and student achievement and our goals for students at that level, the committee decided to roll up Math and Focus to 6th grade. So I just want to make sure the board knows that that professional learning has already started. So they're working with our consultant, Shelley DeBose, throughout the school year and not only learning Math and Focus, but learning Singapore math strategies and implementing those now, even though they're not doing a full implementation for Math and Focus till next year. They are trying out some units this year and embedding the strategies. So, and so far, they've had really successful days with her. Something else to note on this slide is that large increase for grade 8 from 61 to 79. You know, in talking to Mr. DiGiovanni about that, we really think that it's related to Math 8. We started a Math 8 course, and I think it was, students were, the curriculum was paced in a way where students were able to master it better than in previous years. So I think that's why we saw that jump.
Just to confirm, that's, that measurement for grade 8 is measuring where they were in grade 5 to grade 8? Or is it measuring what people in grade 8 three years ago are compared to people in grade 8?
Correct. Yep. Second one.
The second one. Okay. It's 8 to 8. Okay.
8th grade in 2019 to 8th grade. In 2022.
Tricia, I have a quick question, both for the math and the ELA. Do we look at, for elementary school, do we compare internally, look at the different schools, elementary schools? Because I know in the past, we've been asked by some parents about comparing the different schools. Are we tracking?
We do break that data out. Yep.
Thank you.
So here's the longitudinal chart for math. As you can see on the bottom, an 8th grade goes across, you know, that does, that 79 does seem significantly different than the pattern that we've seen for a while. But again, I would say that the data is trending well, and I already, I spoke about the 6th grade.
Tricia, can I just say, I think we've all seen the newspapers this week with this data coming out on a state level. And it's really hard to read the numbers that less than half of kids at a state level, you know, are showing proficiency at 3 and 4 levels across math and English. And these numbers coming out of COVID are, you know, they're massive numbers. And I just can't let this pass without saying a big thank you to everybody here and everybody that was on the board when I wasn't, just the intentionality of the district through such a difficult time and, you know, the COVID recovery plan as we came out of it and supporting. There were definitely a lot of kids who really struggled in the summer schools and the after-school. It's really amazing to see. So just huge thank you. And, you know, obviously, our community has a socioeconomic positive, you know, to the statewide, so that we obviously benefit from resources. from resources. But I just can't but help look back and think about everybody here and how much work went into keeping our kids growing. And it's just unbelievable. So thank you.
And I just wanted to add the the teachers and staff onto that as well, because, you know, as they were grappling with these this new way of teaching, you know, once we got the kids back, their commitment to making sure that we we got them what they needed. And, you know, the number of people that stepped up to do the after school programs, to run the before school programs in the summer enrichment and really rethink their practices to help help kids move ahead has been really impressive.
This this data is hot off the presses. We're looking at the head to head comparisons for Westchester. For this is the combined proficiency for ELA and math and what the rankings are. As you can see, out of 20 districts in Westchester, Rice City School District is ranked sixth. In 2019, they were ranked, we were, we were ranked ninth. Okay, so now we'll turn our attention to the NWEA, the universal screener. Right here, you're looking at our NWEA data from last year, from fall '21 to spring '22. This is the percent of students at high or high average. And and that means any student who's above the 60th percentile. The reason that was chosen is because if you're, according to NWEA, if you're above the 60th percentile, you're projected to pass the New York State test. So that's what would be considered proficient in New York State. You'll see that we do have some declines after third grade. And what I've also done, and what's interesting is because that over the past the 60th percent, you're supposed to be passing the New York State test, our New York State testing data is higher than those spring numbers. So it didn't, it didn't always line up. For example, in seventh grade, we had 80% of our kids above the 60th percentile, but 90% passed the New York State test. So I think overall, in the upper grades, they our students perform better on the New York State test.
Are those numbers on a curve or a sort of expected like, so is high average kind of a, this is what we whoever runs the NWA has stated, is high average? Or is high average literally compared to everyone who takes it? And then it's a, you know, upper 60%?
Yeah. So it's a national percentile. So high is above the 80th percentile and high average is above the 60th, between the 60th and 80th.
And that, so there's sort of some guesstimation estimation in terms of comparing that to where you would pass the New York State.
Right, those are their their calculations. They're saying according to, yeah.
Better than my Magic 8 Ball, but it is somewhat.
Exactly. Sometimes it tracks and sometimes it doesn't. You'll see that for math, it was a little bit closer.
Is it better than always?
Some other data I wanted to show you with the NWEA is every student is given a RIT score once they take it. And then the district has a mean RIT score. And those are put to percentiles, national percentiles. I thought this would be interesting to look at. So this is saying that our first graders last year, the mean RIT score for our first grade was at the 97th percentile nationally. Same for second grade, 96th percentile for third. So basically, you know, there's there, we have, it's a high, high achieving group of students that we have nationally. So just important to note as well.
So sorry, the RIT again is the.
It stands for RASH Unit. It's a scaled score that NWA uses.
And sort of like a combination of math and reading? Or it's?
This is just reading.
Oh, the truth.
Yep.
Oh, right. It says reading. Yeah, that's, I promise you, I am a good reader.
It's not a bad thing.
Tension span sometimes. Reading, I'm good at.
So another piece of it, really important data that NWA gives us is on growth. So they give achievement percentiles, but also growth percentiles. And this chart shows our growth per grade level in reading, fall '21 to spring '22. And the blue bar stands for observed growth. And the yellow diamond stands for grade level norms or projected growth. So the idea is that you want your observed growth to hit the projected growth. So first and second grade hit their growth, the projected growth. And it goes, you know, third, third, fourth to eighth grade did not hit the projected growth. So with first and second grade, you know, we've been doing a lot of work around early reading, early reading skills, foundational skills, phonics. This could be evidence of that. And it also could mean to us that we, our older students need to be pushed further in terms of higher level comprehension skills. It's like one interpretation. So when we think about professional learning and what certain our literacy focus going forward, that's important to keep in mind.
It's.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
I was just gonna say on that previous page for.
The back is still.
No, sorry.
For the the mean RIT score percentile, when you look at that and you've been in other districts, like, what do you do with that data when grades one through five are so high in terms of that percentile against the national? Like, is it, do we have to go?
You teach at a, you teach higher level skills.
Yeah, yeah. And it's harder to see the growth when kids are higher achieving, but it's still possible to see that growth. And it just, it's shifting our practices to really push kids, get the right text in their hands and use, you know, remember, go back to that wheel in the early slides of all those other assessments so that you're not waiting until once a year or twice a year to get that data to know what to do next with the individual students.
Got it. Leaving aside for a second, obviously, those issues with not hitting the projected growth with some of the grades. But is the the downward trend in the raw growth, is that a normal, is it, you know, it, there's less room for growth in the older and that's expected? Or is this something that's particular to us that's also a downward trend and in the older kids are growing less than the younger kids? Do you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah. So yes, you're, it's going to trend down because the students have higher RIT scores, the they're going to be growing less. So yes, so your your kids at the younger students are able to grow more. Yes, absolutely. But that doesn't mean that we shouldn't be hitting our projected growth. Right.
Sorry. So when we look at, you know, when we talk about data and assessment, and it is that the 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 speed at which we're able to receive the feedback.
Yes.
To know. And so we look at a fall to a spring. We don't have those kids sitting in front of us anymore. The, what is the, and perhaps the the principals may be better able to answer, what is the sharing of information then? Because those students are no longer here. But then also, what is the reflective piece that teachers are going through to say, okay, with this group of students, I was able to do or not do, what should I be thinking about as I move forward?
Yep. Well, someone, someone want to chime in?
Sure. So at the beginning of this year, for example, we had the teachers before school started, when kids came in, go over the previous year's scores, just to make sure that they knew the students and their achievement levels and where to challenge them and where to support them. And that could help them map out, because sometimes in between grades, there's pre teaching where there's similar topics. So then they could plan for the future year with the topics where they can have targeted instruction for specific kids. We're working on something. It's in the works about how we'll bridge this to the high school. But I could see the data coming in from the elementary schools. So we also, with the sixth grade teachers, they could also do the same work.
Right now, for eighth to ninth grade, we use it anecdotally, because it was our first year, really trying to turnkey that information into the high school. So for things like math lab supports and and that's obviously, this is a reading growth, so it's not related. But we did use the data from the NWAs from and the state testing from Joe to place students in appropriate supports and give information to the classroom teachers for most at risk students. But we need to figure out a good plan for turnkeying information and challenge our other students and to make sure that we have plans in place for all levels, because students split into so many different teachers. So we're trying to figure out how to meaningfully turnkey that piece.
And I would say at the elementary level, there's two things that happen. They receive a folder with hard copies of local assessments of all the students who are placed in their class for the start of the year. So they're able to comb through and look at the actual assessments to see how the children did. And then there are digital assessment reports that they're able to receive as well. So the students who are currently in their class, they can go back and look at the NWA results from the year prior. And they're able to see in the current assessment, so what are the skills that they're ready to learn and then teach towards that. So the teacher gets a full profile of the students who are in their class in September, even though they didn't assess them from the year prior, they get all of that data. And then they can make decisions. They have grade level meetings. They have meetings with administrators, data team meetings to really comb through the data and figure out what the needs are of the students.
And Angela, those teacher reports, so for example, we just did the fall administration, the results are in. Those teacher reports will have all of that information, correct? So last year's administration and this year's and showing the graphs to.
We also provide teachers time for articulation meetings. Sometimes it happens at the end of the school year or at the start of the school year, where K1, 1, 2, they overlap and they they have time set up in their schedule to talk about children and to share information what children are working on, goals that they've had. And those assessment folders often come up in those conversations as well.
Is there an opportunity for reflective? So, you know, I no longer have Joe in my class, but I can see where Joe left me at the end of the school year and let me think about the work that I did with Joe and was, did it get him to where I thought he could? Are we able to have those kind of historical conversations yet?
We have them at the end of that school year. So, you know, you take, but they take it in the end of May, beginning of June, you can look back on a full year that way. We've not done it the the next year to look back on the full year, if that makes sense. Yeah. Yeah. And I think too, another piece to that is not just student specific, but grade level specific. So what we're able to do is get reports that show as a grade level, what are some strengths and what are some weaknesses? And then reflect on whether or not we're seeing a trend in that. Are we seeing that it continues to be a deficit? Or are we seeing some improvement because we've made some changes in our curriculum and our instruction?
And I would just build on what Annie said, those articulation meetings, a lot of that data discussion happens then as well.
So for the reading growth, which I know the growth piece is the piece we would be have a higher focus on maybe than individual bits of this. Like this, this piece from NWEA is among the most important, the growth. So the, there are dis, there are grade level conversations going on for, let's say, fourth, fourth to eighth, that the growth for that grade didn't come in where we expected. And so there can be, I know that this, this is really for teachers to work with individual students and build that conversation. And you're saying there's also sort of a grade review happening. And so in these, this instance where we're seeing the growth kind of really even coming in, let's say, negative on eighth grade, that those conversations are also happening.
So for an eighth grade team, if this comes, if this, if it's a lower number, we have other forms of checks and balances. This may be a poor student performance on that particular test. The reading test that we do have is longer. And you'll see a difference with math scores with the same students. Sometimes students may, it's a computerized test. They're also getting used to that, that they have, they've never used a computerized test. And it is, it might take 50 to 60 minutes. So we look at everything. We actually look how fast they went through their test. Sometimes students go a little bit faster than others. There's alerts. We could see where there's trends of getting correct answers and then where they're wrong. So there are other ways that we can look at how the, when they sat for the test, how well and how how hard they worked on that test. But outside of that, we have other things in a classroom to just make sure that this is right.
And I think Mr. Di Giovanni's point as well, taking it back to what you said earlier about when you look at, okay, that 60% is supposed to be kind of a predictor. And we can see based on our New York State assessments, that clearly the students are performing better than that. So therefore, a big piece of that could be seriousness of student test taking. Sometimes it's easier to pay attention than others.
Just a, yeah, just as a wondering of mine, because it is so much more difficult as students get beyond the initial skills of reading, right? You go from reading to learning how to read to reading to understand. Is there any conversation that's taking place yet at a district level about working in more intentionality in reading practices in the core content areas, social studies and science being the ones I think of most on the top of my head?
Right. So yes, that's always our goal to to build. Do you want to, do you want to answer that? Joe, you looked like you were nodding. But I would say, I would say, yes, we're always building in reading skills to all content areas. However, I think that this, this data relatively new still, I think will refocus us, refocuses us on that. And also just in our English classes and making sure that we're really building in higher level reading comprehension and being really explicit about it.
I think there is a piece of looking at, you know, like the largest gaps are in fourth and eighth grade, where they're also taking science exams, like state science exams. And if we were to look at the the state data on the science exams, we might notice that they're also starting to shift to some informational text reading in those years, which does to a certain extent, impact their ability from a literacy standpoint to think in terms of fiction and nonfiction texts. So there might be some correlations there. Like, we can cross them that data, because that is probably the years where you're introducing a different type of of reading strategy as well.
And then to switch to math for NWA, that here is the percent of high and high average from fall to spring last year. You'll see, you know, mostly, we have, we have a two, I think, slight decreases in second and eighth grade, and the rest are are increases across the year. And as I said before, those most closely match our our math, New York State testing data. The the mean RIT score percentiles are similar to reading. Those are those national percentiles, again, again, scoring quite well nationally as a district. And then here's the growth chart for math. So in every grade level, we're hitting our growth for math, which is fantastic.
Well, and to be fair, you're not just meeting it, you're exceeding it.
Yeah.
In many of the grade levels.
Yeah.
Which is an impressive thing to do.
Was there any theories on the, like, we're crushing it in math?
Crushing it in math?
The crushing in math theory? Our grades are slipping a little on reading?
I would say if you, you know, it's so much harder with reading to to get to individual students' skills and to support their growth. It's much trickier. The the materials that you have for mathematics aren't there for literacy. And it's a lot of really hard work. So it's, I think it's a bit more challenging from an instructional standpoint. But if you've got the right professional learning supports in place for the staff, I think you start to see those shifts over time.
Do you think because of that, that maybe there is a greater impact in sort of the COVID disruption on reading versus math for these types of things? Or I'm just making stuff up now?
I would say so. So based on our historical data, I'm not sure our data is showing a huge, you know, COVID impact on on our kids. But I I think as a whole, sure, I think, you know, more abstract, more concrete. I mean, those challenges are going to have an impact.
Well, again, to be fair, for the district's work and the work of the teachers and and the professional learning, this, I would be, I mean, you could never do it, but it would be super cool to see what would 2019, 20 NWA math data look like, right? So you've got, if you're in fourth grade now, you've had.
Three, four.
Math and focus.
Excuse me, we use different strategies to solve math problems, mathematicians.
Did anybody bring any counting bears?
Those are quite helpful, as are your fingers. Thank you. So but you've had a significant number of years in math and focus, which was a program that this board all said, we knew we needed to change what we were doing in math, because it was not working. So now, well, they've do, it's working.
It's working pretty great. Yeah.
When you think about the NWA, the high and the high average.
When you think about the NWA, the high and the high average, what would perfect look like? Not perfect, what's, what could that percentage be? I mean, you're never going to have 100% of your students at a high and high average, right? Like, so when we look at, and it's weird, I'm just looking at these numbers statically for the first time and I, you know, is an 80 great? Is it, could it be?
To have 80, to have 80% of our kids at higher, high average?
Right? Like what are we, is there a goal? And it's not, I'm just trying to think.
100%.
Of course, but you're never going to get there, right? 100% is not, never going to happen.
Yeah.
So what is the ideal number? Or are we always just looking at changes in?
I mean, when you think about the MTSS model or like the RTI model of the percentage of kids who should be on grade level, you know, you would hope for it to be around 85.
Okay.
90 would be fantastic.
Okay.
Yes.
But in reality, it's truly more about the growth score, right?
Sure.
That to make sure that, that each individual kid is moving.
I realize the question in isolation is, has a lot to, a lot more to go around it, but I'm just trying to think, trying to put them in context of like what you would think grade would be. And that's all, that's it. Not.
Yeah, it'll be interesting in a few years.
Right.
So look at that longitudinal data.
Right, exactly.
I mean, look at the shifts in the longitudinal state data from, we were in the 50s to the high 70s, 80s, and I think we had 190 there, right?
Yeah, that's amazing.
And we've gone from double digits to single in that listing.
One more question on these, and in terms of like, you know, the growth numbers, which are, you know, they're literal, actual numbers for the scores and then comparing that back to the, like the, the, the actual scorings, which, you know, have a range and it's like a number range. Is that, are those numbers static across grades? Like meaning, is a 250 score, which seems to be the top end of the math, is that the same, you know, inferior second grader who got a 250? And that would be, that would be the same as a 10th grader getting a 250? Or, or those are different scales when you're on?
So it's the same scale. So a fourth, a second grader who gets a 250 and a fourth grader gets a 250, they are on the same level academically. Okay, in the next slide, we have our New York State Regents scores. This is the percent of students proficient with the different assessments on the bottom. Doing, doing well in the Regents?
And just a reminder, so the, the state is actually in the midst of the graduation measures project and looking at the collected data and feedback over the last couple of years and pre-COVID, they had in-person sessions where people were giving feedback. And now that commission is looking at the future of the graduation requirements and the graduation measures. So there'll be lots of discussion this year and next on the future of Regents exams. And whether or not they'll continue, change, stay the same.
And the next slide shows our AP student historical data from 2018 to 2022. You'll notice that in 2021, the, the number of AP candidates was down a bit. We are back up to where we were, pretty much where we were in 2019, close to that. And I know that there was, and due to COVID, due to the pandemic, we saw less assessments being taken last year than, I'm sorry, two years ago than, than last year. So the big question is, question in which you've already started kind of asking is what do we do with the data? And we do a lot with it and the principals explained a bit about the analysis of it and the ways in which we work with teachers, because a lot of it is around professional learning. But I know they want to speak some more about what that, what we do for, to differentiate instruction based on that, on that data for students at all levels and in all tiers. Tier one, which is classroom, two and three would be pullout support.
All right, I'm going to get us started with tier one. So tier one is differentiated classroom instruction. So it's what's happening all day in our classrooms. So teachers, as Tricia spoke about, have a variety, multiple assessment tools that they use, some are formal, some are informal assessments. They have opportunities to analyze those assessments, something like when we talk about the local assessment, so the TC running records, we have the Hegarty phonemic, the phonics blending, phonological awareness. Those assessments provide us with really quick information and data that we can look at quickly and then use that data to drive our instruction within the classroom. So the teachers have supports from the administrators, from central office, from our staff developers. There's a variety of different professional development structures in place to support them in analyzing that data in order to drive the instruction. So, you know, as I said, as I started, different, tier one is happening all day within the classroom. So when you think about a readers or a workshop, readers or writers workshop, teachers are teaching a mini lesson and then children are going off and they're working independently. When they're working independently, that's when that rich differentiation truly happens. So children in readers workshop are in just write books, they're reading books that are matched to them based on a TC running record. So they have that text in their hand, they're able to do the work and then teachers are able to conference one-on-one or pull small groups and provide small group instruction that's tailored to meet those children's need to continue to push them to grow. We also, so that's one model, right? When you think about just classroom instruction, but then also in our schedule, we have the win period built in, the what I need. So children are getting what they need during that time. So again, they're using those assessments to drive that instruction. It's targeted, it can be independent work for a child, it can be one-on-one with a teacher, it can be small group with a teacher, it can be small group within, with peers. And it's an opportunity and it's a time for teachers to be able to provide children, whether it's that push because they're not there yet or they're meeting grade level expectations or exceeding grade level expectations and that they need that little extra push. But all of that work that the teachers are doing really comes from the assessments, formal and informal, that we are doing on an ongoing basis. So it's kind of tier one in a nutshell.
Can I just ask a quick question on that?
Sure.
How do you feel the teachers are embracing or thinking about the NWA? Because I know it's really new, obviously there's a lot of, already they have so many assessments that they had access to, which is fantastic. But just trying to understand the learning curve or the acceptance in of new information because it is, as parents, I know we're trying to understand, it takes, it's a learning curve to get to really embrace it and understand it. So I'd be interested in feedback on how the teachers are doing.
Sure, I mean, anyone can feel. I, I think last year it was definitely, there was a steep learning curve. I think this year, the conversations around the data that we're having right now during grade level meetings or during our data team meetings that our APs run are much richer than they were last year. I think teachers are much more comfortable having those conversations. The staff developers, I have to say, have been instrumental in supporting teachers in analyzing. And the reports that NWEA, and you guys can speak to them as well, that they produce really do help you pinpoint specifically what the children need.
There is a wealth of information from the NWEA that I think we're still working on unpacking and helping teachers to unpack and use in the classroom. So that's going to take some time. I also think the NWEA has helped to affirm a lot of the local assessments we do. So I think it's, it's just one more measure that's helped us ensure that students are on the right path when it comes to the other assessments.
And I think a, a big part of the conversation with teachers, I know Tricia and I met with some teachers today, is time. You know, that's the biggest challenge we face in everything we do is finding time for them to sit with their grade level teams, with their grade level leaders and the principals, APs and staff developers and process this data. And more time is needed early on as we're really becoming fluent in this new language of data that we're using. But they want to do right by their kids and they want to be able to use this data effectively. So it, it seems to me that it's definitely the right path for us. And as they become more comfortable and have more data to look at over time, I think we'll, we'll start to see it become less anxiety producing for some or, you know, less of that stressful, all right, my 25 kids, what do I do? Kind of thing.
I think it also depends on the grade level as well. So the older grades, I feel, are a bit more comfortable where the younger grades are saying, we need to first see what the children need in order to learn how to take a test like this. So for example, kindergarten doesn't take it in the fall for a reason. And then when they take it for the first time, it's trying to figure out, how do you drag something on the screen in order to move the letter to the right part of, of the word? Or just trying to figure out, is the data accurate for our youngest learners? Or could it be that we have to get a little bit more comfortable with the computer-based testing?
So in tier two, we use the data from the NWEA, from the local assessments, from the screenshot before and from the state assessments. And we have criteria established to help us determine what students would qualify for a second level or tier two. And those interventions would happen outside typically during the win time that Annie referred to. So the students aren't missing any of their interventions or lessons from the rest of the school day. Like I said, most of those tier two interventions happen during the win when students would leave, three to four times a week in a six-day cycle, say 30 minutes. And they have targeted interventions, small group interventions with one of our AAS teachers. And we use, it's, you could call it double dose, but it's actually, it's, there are different strategies and pieces of instruction utilized that aren't necessarily utilized in the classroom. So it's intervention based upon what the student needs, based upon the data, but it's something different than what they're getting in their genetic classroom.
And so then with tier three, what happens is if we have a group of students who are struggling in the tier two level interventions, then we will start to increase the frequency a teacher sees students or reduce the number of children in a class. And so if you think of this model as a triangle, you'll say tier one is like the most students at the base, the teachers are all differentiating for all of the children. And then we start to move up and say, in this triangle or this pyramid, okay, we have less students who are going to need tier two, but we have a good chunk that our data has said, we need to provide different types of interventions for them. Teachers will identify, is it decoding? Is it comprehension? If it's in the area of reading, is it math? What exactly is it? Different interventionists will see the children. And then that's six to eight weeks, we're watching to see how they're doing. And if they're not progressing, that's when we move to tier three. It's the smallest part of the pyramid in saying, this small group of children right here, it's not enough to see an interventionist three times in a six-day cycle for 30 minutes to work on reading. We're now going to say it's daily, it's six times in a six-day cycle for 30 minutes. And let's see if we can start to see that the children are improving in their areas of weakness. And so you may hear your teachers talk about children being discussed at what's called the IST, the instructional support team meeting. And so this is where these conversations happen. So teachers can bring children to the instructional support team meeting to say, I'm really struggling with this child, here is what the data's saying, here's what I've tried in the room in my tier one interventions and I'm not seeing progress, I'm looking for suggestions. We might send a teacher back with some suggestions because we think there might be some additional things they can do. And then if not, that's the time where we might say, a reading teacher or math teacher should pick up the child based on this criteria, it's very specific. And then the teacher starts to work with the child, six to eight weeks, comes back to IST. We say, is there progress? Yes, there's progress, great, keep going. No, there's not progress, we've now landed in tier three. It's a much smaller group of children.
Angela's saying everything I have to say. So the middle school is very similar.
It was very similar to the elementary school with its tiers. You said that, great. Really trying to think what I have to say now. So we have a very similar process. We meet with our teams, Mr. Land and I meet with our teams on a weekly basis and that's our MTSS process where teams will identify students. And if they feel that there's an area where they need support, we then start to look at all the data, whether it's the NWEA, whether it's state test courts, whether it's informal and formal assessments in the classroom. And we start to break down that data with the teams. We create a learning target, we create a plan for that student, a list of interventions. It could be from small group instruction to refocus redirection or graphic organizers, any type of intervention in that class where we hope to help that student. 90% of our students after tier one services are great, some need some services afterwards. So that's when we start to go to tier two and tier three. We will monitor this for a certain amount of time, it could be four to six weeks, it could be six to eight weeks, depending on the student and what they need help and support with. If we start to see that students aren't making, you know, making strides, we're going to start to look at some tier two supports with using the data from the teachers. And that looks like a literacy lab, a math lab, a learning center, all these different support classes that they would have in their schedule. The goal is for the student not to be in there for the full year, the goal is for them to be there for a specific amount of time where they can come out and leave. So our schedule's built that way where they can go back into an elective class or whatever class they had previously. So there is that flexibility. But students have to achieve that learning target or that goal to leave that class. That's small group instruction. We identify students, if they score below that 60% on the NWA, that's a flag for us to look at. And then we break down that data with our reading teacher, our reading specialist. If they score below a two, if they have input or feed, teacher input that looks that we need to help this student, they'll have a five out of a 10-day cycle with the reading teacher throughout that time as well, where they'll be pulled out of an elective class. So we have, and that's all small, small group instruction, that tier two process. So there's a lot of things that are built in. The lit labs and the math labs would be their math teacher or their English teacher, where they're also using the data to help break down areas where they need support as well. Our reading teacher will also go in and co-plan with teachers, our ELA teachers. So if there's a student who's struggling in this small group instruction, she will work with them to give feedback on her, her work with them so that she could further give them ideas and how to further support them, if it's decoding issue, if it's a phonics issue, if it's a comprehension issue, whatever it may be. She'll also co-teach with them sometimes, which is great, social model lessons for some of our teachers where they might not have had that before. Jane, you were talking earlier about other subjects. When she meets with the teams, this could also, this also happens in social studies. We're getting it into science, we're not there in math yet, but there's time with this. So when we start to break down word problems for students who have issues, this is where we're going to be having this work. So it's coming. Then, you know, if we're not seeing progress at that point, we go to a tier three and that's what Angela was saying before, it's, it's just a higher frequency and it's really individualized instruction, it'll go from small group to individualized.
Could you also talk about kind of the other end of the spectrum? So if the data comes in, are the teams talking about like a very high achieving student who either, let's say, doesn't have, maybe isn't showing growth or is showing super high growth and how those conversations go to support, you know, a student who's achieving really well, but, you know, making sure you're pushing them further?
So that's where the shift was this year. So last year was really baby steps into NWA and using this data and other data points. It was the focus on how are we going to support? So there's a lot of students that need to be challenged. So that is where we're looking this year. So where are you ready? Where can we challenge you? Where can we further do this work? So teachers are, especially in math, looking at that and that's where those small groups come in. I know we were talking today when we were doing the walk about whiteboards and all the math classes, that's where you're seeing that. You might see harder problems here, all the problems are different and they're all differentiated for that group. Similar concept, but throughout different groups in the room. So we are trying to move to that, that is the goal. So you do have different methods of instruction or differential instruction in the classroom for all classes.
And I would say at the elementary level, that's the beauty of the win period. So the win period is this designated time where there's no new instruction happening and children can receive their services, children can go and get instrument lessons, but children also, what I need is what win stands for. There are children who need enrichment type activities, they need to be pushed. And so that's what's happening with the classroom teachers during that win period. They're looking at data and they're figuring out what are the needs of the children that are here, that are, you know, high achievement, maybe their growth is kind of staying in the same place, what can they do to help them? And that's the beauty of the NWA, it will tell the teachers, this child is ready for this.
Suzanne, do you want to talk about the high school level?
Yeah, I can speak about it quickly. We don't have the same kind of built-in ongoing assessment that you would get from an NWEA, which is actually something that I'm jealous about, but, because it's also really hard across the different courses with the different content to work that kind of thing in. We have a similar process, certainly with the eighth grade coming into ninth grade, it was easier to kind of put students into the right places to start because we have their data from the NWEA. But we have to use our local assessments for the majority of it. We do look at the Regents scores to extract data from that. AP does not provide us with any data. We don't get a breakdown in any way of standards or achievement or areas of proficiency or anything like that, it's a raw score. And so there's no usable data that comes from AP for us. But we do break down the Regents, they give us the standards and the proficiency ratings for each standard within a content area. So teachers are able to determine the areas of content that they value. One of the harder things using the Regents, this is all going to sound super negative, I'm sorry. One of the harder things using the Regents is you One of the harder things using the regions is you can't take data from a living environment exam and feed it forward to chemistry and think that that's going to help them. We can, in terms of scientific method and things like that. So, we look at trends in content areas in terms of thematic understanding in English, but they only take that test in 11th grade. And scientific method and things like that, that's been helpful, like understanding if students can read and code and annotate charts. So, there have been some skilled data sets that we've been able to pull from that. So, we rely heavily on our, for 10th, 11th, and 12th grade, on our in-house local assessments for a lot of the intervention process. We are looking at how to benchmark that data better in terms of proficiency and where we would like our ideal graduates to land, to make sure that we're aiming at that, and then backtracking, how to backward design our programs to skill-check at each grade level, but that's going to take a little bit of time. And I think it's going to happen through the work that they're doing with critical thinking and curriculum revision, and that's where you're going to start to see those things really kind of come into play. Tier one, we have a tutoring center drop-in, so it's available to students who choose to go in there, get support. We're working on the same kinds of things in terms of differentiating, leveling up, leveling down. I believe in challenge questions for every class. I used to keep a little penguin box at the front of my room, just to make sure that we're really, there should be no such thing as done in a classroom, like I'm done, that doesn't seem like a thing. So, we're working on making sure that we're pushing students where we can and supporting them where they need it. We have National Honor Society tutors available to all of our students. We have a process for them to request it. There's a QR code they can scan to request one, and we match them up with somebody proficient in there, which is actually also pushing children's support, because students who are talented in certain content areas are able to support their classmates, which they actually do seem to like. And then, there's X period, where students can go for support with their teachers. So, that's our universal things that we're working on across the board. Tier two, we, they call it IST, but we have our MTSS process. Joe uses the same kind of method as well. And if a student's still struggling with all those things put in place, they get sent to our team, we discuss it, we come up with specific interventions to be measured into class. Our team comes up with some ideas with the teachers, so that they're using it consistently across all classes. A lot of times, it's things like chunking for information. So, and we also have a homework club. And those first two are done on six-to-eight week cycles, just like any intervention process would be. You come back, you check the data, you either move them forward, add interventions, or push them to tier three. Tier three, because it's a program change, in the high school, we do it on a 10-week basis, because we assign them for marking periods, just because that's the way it works for us. We use the tutoring center for that as well. But the students are assigned then, so now it becomes part of their program. We also have a math lab that was new this year, that we were able to kind of turnkey from some of the models that they've been using. K8, it seems kind of silly to suddenly cut out some of those supports that students were using. And just like Joe said, we're not looking to keep students in there forever. It's totally based on performance, and if they're feeling comfortable with the content. Right now, we're facing a challenge of students not wanting to leave, even though they're indicating that, like, they're actually able to. I'm trying to think. I think that's about it. I think that hits our tiers.
Thank you. Are there any other questions at all?
Good.
Okay.
All right.
Thanks.
Thanks. That was fantastic.
Thank you. Joe, it's a phrase you used, and Dr. Byrne likes to use it as well, baby steps. Anyone who talks to me knows I'm not a fan of baby steps, but I am also the first one to admit, when things are working, and data has been a baby step process that is working. And it's evident that it is consistent between and among the five schools and the three levels. And this is the kind of stuff, and I've said it before, that fundamentally changes how our students receive instruction, and the levels of success that they can personally have wherever they find themselves academically. This is how we make baby steps last. And I still am not a fan of baby steps, and I don't think we always have to be a baby. I think sometimes we can, we can walk like a toddler, loud and grumpy and making a lot of noise sometimes, and that's okay, too. But I do really just want to say lots of appreciation, because this is not easy. It's also a fundamental shift in how our teachers think about teaching, how our administrators think about leading, and about how a district thinks about creating programs and instruction on. And it's monumentally going to change things. We've already seen it, like, when we look at our math data. And this is great stuff. And so, I thank all of you across the district for all of this work. It's really great to see. Anyone else?
Good.
Okay. All right, great. So, we are going to move on to the hearing of the public on non-agenda items. Don't see anyone from the public. If there is, I'm going to use my wait time. Seeing no one, I will forego our usual statement on this portion of the agenda. So, now, we will move to the consent agenda. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Chris Rappetto, followed by Tom Stein. We need to take one piece of business out of the consent agenda. That is item number, sorry. Oh, heavens to Betsy.
I'm trying to find it.
Oh, there it is. 8.04. This is the approval of the New York State School Boards Association Area 10 Director. We need to take a vote. So, at this time, we, there are two participants, two candidates, I should say, Cheryl Brady from White Plains and Deborah Gatti, G-A-T-T-I, from North Rockland, whole language child, I apologize. So, those of you who vote for Cheryl Brady, please indicate by raising your hands. Okay, that's a six to no vote. So, the Rye City School District Board of Education will put their vote forward for Cheryl Brady of White Plains. Now, to revert back to the rest of the consent agenda, we'll begin our review. Consent agenda general. Any questions, comments? Consent agenda fiscal.
When was the last time we saw that empty?
Fiscal? Oh, fiscal construction.
Yeah. No.
Oh, wait till next time.
But wait, there's more. Okay, consent agenda professional appointments. Consent agenda classified appointments. Consent agenda special education. Okay. All those in favor of the consent agenda? Six, nothing. Consent agenda has been approved. This evening on our consent agenda, we accepted a gift from the Osborne PTO for circus arts and boundless adventures, which are great community-building opportunities and create a wonderful sense of belonging in the schools. So, we are greatly appreciative of that. The Osborne PTO is also donating money for playground striping. We talked a lot tonight about instructional programming, and one of the key ways the kids are able to access any of that instructional programming is having a chance to take a break, get out, move your big muscles and moves. We appreciate the Osborne PTO for helping support our students' social and emotional health, so they're able to learn. Milton PTO is donating money for a second-grade author study, which is a wonderful way to enrich our literacy curriculum in real life, so that our kids can find out what authors really do from an actual author, which is pretty exciting. In our professional appointments, we continue to fill anticipated and sometimes unanticipated vacancies. And as we know, this current environment of the job market is still difficult, so we greatly appreciate the effort of our human resources department for being able to continue to fill those vacancies in a timely way. It makes a big difference in the instructional program. We also have more club appointment positions at both the middle school and the high school. And again, we thank our staff for being willing to help and work post your instructional day to provide enrichment and extension opportunities for all of our students. Makes a big difference. So, that moves us to information and discussion communications to and from the board. Kelsey Johnson.
Well, I have a lot of updates from the Traffic and Pedestrian Safety Committee.
All right.
So, you know, first, just highlighting, so I attend the monthly meetings as the liaison from the school board, and there has been a big shift since Commissioner Copie came on board with both Rye PD and Commissioner Copie's attendance to the meetings and participation, which has been greatly appreciated. And what we are actually seeing is due to, it just seems like increased collaboration across the city, there's actually a lot of great things to report around the schools that have recently happened. So, one is, anyone over at Osborne may have noticed there's a new flashing speed sign when you go down Osborne Road, which is a very strong sort of mitigator to speed, you know, with the frown face when you're speeding. So, that was something that was funded and was put in, so that's fantastic. We have, on the way to Milton School, a lot of students walk down past Rye Town Park, and we have, going in at the end of this month, the city is going to be putting in the flashing beacon crosser at Rye Beach and Dearborn to be able to safely cross over into the park, or walk to school.
That's huge.
So, it's a real, it's been a lot of advocacy over the years from the community, and that is something that was recently funded, so that will be a huge positive. The other thing that came up, which I just wanted to put on the radar of the administrators, is there was a state law that cities could not change their speed limit to 25 miles per hour by law. That law has been recently retracted, so it is probable that the city of Rye will be looking at a 25 mile per hour speed limit throughout the city, and it involves the schools, because then the school zones could actually go down to 15 miles per hour. So, they may be coming for feedback to the school administrators on that. So, just to start thinking about that. And then, the other thing that came up that was school-related is there was a request from the Rye PD to turn intervale into parking on one side, and a lot of the high school students, the Rye High School students use intervale for parking. And the police department has found it to be a safety issue for emergency vehicles, to be able to fit down intervale. So, that parking change will take place, and it will impact some of our high school students. So, just making sure we have that information out there. And the final thing is, they are going to be reaching out to do a meeting on sort of improving crossing guard coverage, which at the city level, similar to many positions, you know, at, just in the United States, it's very hard to fill certain positions. Crossing guards have been difficult to fill, so we've seen a lot of gaps in coverage on the city, some of the city crossings. But they're aware that the process could be improved, and they're going to be having a meeting with administrators on that as well. And so, that's all the TPS updates, so I'll definitely keep you posted if any more come. And then, I don't know if this is like counts as a, from the board, but I did just want to say thank you. Dr. Byrne had mentioned the fantastic parent university on safety and security, but it was amazingly timed, and the community, I think, benefited from it, and I just haven't had a chance to say a public thank you to the administrators for the fantastic lockout. The communication was unbelievable to our community, and the collaboration with the Rye PD, as we were seeing at TPS as well. It's just nice to see everyone working together in such an effective way. So, sincerest thanks for all the work last week with the lockout.
Great. Anyone else? No? Okay. So, our next meeting will be November 15th. It will be open topics, and we are thrilled to be able to report that unlike previous years, there are no restrictions. Please come. You do not have to sign up in advance, you are just able to come and participate. So, we hope to see people there. So, with that, we will close this meeting. Can I have a motion to adjourn? Chris Rappetto, seconded by Vivek Kimath. All those in favor? Six, nothing. Thank you. Have a wonderful evening.